We've already called the meeting to order and had an executive session. At this point in time, I will invite you to join us in seminological regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of potential amendments to the agenda pending motion or approval by the council. I'd like to add an item before other business to provide an update and approval on the ABSME union contract. So I'll take a motion for that, and I would like to strike item number 13 pending further staff review. That's around parking garage rates. I'll take the motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries. Okay. We've got quite a few agenda items. Next up is public comment, followed by an information session on the TIF bond for the development proposal. So that's coming up promptly. If anyone has public comment at this point in time, this is the time to share it. Yes, Mr. Gorman?
I'd like to start off with thanking. First thank you is to you. Thank you for being our mayor. Really appreciate your efforts. Second thank you is to Tom and Dom for putting out some article about the information and the master about our budget. Not quite enough for me, but certainly a good step in the right direction. And I also like to thank Tom. He sat down with me for about an hour up in his office, giving me information. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Anything else?
I have one thing for public comment.
Yes.
A colleague of mine and Jim's, Larry Bruce, probate judge, has announced his retirement. And he was a very honorable person, served that job very well, very well-known in the community. We'll all miss him, the integrity that he brought to the office, and hope that the next appointed or the next elected judge will act in a similar manner. Very high regard. Larry Bruce. Larry Bruce.
Thank you.
Well, second.
All right. Next up is item number four, our information session on the upcoming TIF bond vote. Dom will be presenting.
Thank you. Raj. I thought I'd run through a few slides just to give you a sense of what we're talking about. And cover some information and then also give folks a chance to ask questions if they would like. But not try to cover so much information during the initial pre-conviction that we don't have time for questions. So what's before the voters in town meeting day is a TIF financing question. And we've been through a couple of these, but the question before the voters is, shall the voters authorize the city to issue 2.5 million in tax increment financing bonds? So the way, just a quick refresher on the way tax increment financing works, the citizen elements are approved for a TIF. The blue line is the base value of our TIF district, which was set in 2012. The orangish slice there, which is the increased assessed value for redevelopment, that's what's available to service the bonds that are issued. That is the increment. At the end of the TIF, your grand list grows, and that's why it's such a powerful economic development tool in the state of Vermont. Gives you permission to use not just the municipal's increments, but also the education increments to service the debt on certain public improvements. One of the public improvements that, two of the public improvements that the city has been authorized to issue debt and service those debts using TIF is ground fields and construction and parking facilities. That's the increment that we're talking about. Here's the public question. Can we issue 2.5 million in TIF financing bonds? We've got the full question available if anybody's interested, but that's it in a nutshell. I know there's some folks that have concerns about the project from the government review context, and we're welcome to raise those concerns here tonight. But most of those concerns are, will really come up after the voters weigh in and say, yeah, this is, or is not an appropriate use of TIF financing. So the building hasn't been designed, hasn't entered anything more than conceptual design. All of that will be before the DRB, questions related to traffic, questions related to typical site plan approval, parking, ingress, egress. It's hard not to get into some of those questions when you look at a project. But if you like the idea of the project, that you have those concerns, you can still have a chance to voice those concerns later on. So the story of this project, it accomplishes four key goals for the city, but it really begins with our existing public safety facility. And your police station, your public safety facilities, as we all know, are important symbols of civic pride. On a pragmatic level, it's awfully hard to recruit new officers when your police station doesn't inspire confidence. This one was never designed to be a commercial structure or a police station, it's an old granary. And it's got, and has had a number of problems. It's in the flood plain, so we can't get federal grants to improve it. It's got some serious deferred maintenance on the outside of the building, it's about a hundred grand. We've been wrestling to put that into it until we knew where we were headed. But two of its main problems are, it's just too darn small. It's about 3,000 square feet. The size of the police force that we expanded to now that we're serving as a regional entity for both San Owen's City and San Owen's Town, also when you add in the regional dispatch center, it's just too darn small. And that shows up in any number of ways, from the workspaces, to the parking, to the condition of the facility. So for some time, we've been trying to figure out a plan to get a new police station and trying to achieve a win-win where we can accomplish more than one objective in the process. We took a long, long, hard look at putting police at, and fire at the former Fonda Container Facility. The construction cost there came back at about 40 bucks a square foot, and all we were getting was a new police station. That didn't seem like the most efficient and effective use of our resources, and we really thought that we could form another public-private partnership like we've done elsewhere in the downtown and use the opportunity to get a new station to really drive some of the redevelopment projects in the downtown. So we began talking with some developers about how we could put that type of a project together. Ultimately, we formed a relationship with Nettie Real Estate. Nettie's represented locally by Grant Butterfield, who's here tonight. And we put together a deal, the first piece of which is, Nettie Real Estate would acquire the existing police facility, excuse me, Nettie Real Estate would acquire the proposed police station, which is the existing CCV building. This is a great candidate for a police facility. It works remarkably well from a layout perspective, has the right looking field, the department loves it, inspires public confidence. There's a whole series of nuts and bolts concerns related to parking, the potential to expand the site later for the fire department if need be. It's within good line of sight to put the dispatch facilities up on the hill. And if we or developer bought this, then we could put together a deal with CCV to move them downtown, which is long, and rather with the hotel as one of the, kind of the holy grail of downtown revitalization. So we created this vision, working with Grant and his team, that they would buy this building and lease it back to us. Terms and the length of our lease would match the terms and the length of a new building downtown. And on this parcel, we'd like to construct several buildings, but the first up front is a 25,000 square foot mixed-use Class A building. The first, there's 10,000 square feet on each floor. On the first floor, the first five feet up front towards Main Street are retail. The second 5,000 square feet are camper leave-in parking. The top two floors then, we envision to be CCV and Northwestern Medical Center. We've had extensive conversations with those two proposed tenants, long enough and rich enough and in-depth enough that they're comfortable with us using their logo and describing the project, though we haven't inked those deals. There's the northern view of it. On the back of the site, we propose to construct two multifamily dwelling units, one that would replace the existing affordable housing that's on the front, it's on Maiden Lane. That building could use some improvements from a public health and safety perspective. There's a lot of opportunity where, so there's 20 affordable housing units, and we would also construct an additional 20 units of market-grade housing. All four of those are frankly home runs for the downtown, for the city. Start from the police station to the new 25,000 square foot Class A building downtown, improve in the housing conditions in the affordable housing units, and 20 market-grade units downtown. All of that begins to create the market. The new market ratings begins to create the market for additional new dwellings and new market-grade residences downtown. So how could all of this happen? It doesn't happen without significant subsidy from the city via tax increment financing. Whiten Burke is our commercial real estate advisor, who's done the financial loaning for the TIF for the life of it. And what you have to do in a project like this is match up your increments on your new projects with the tax revenue that that would generate, and that rolls out into a bonded amount that you could support. As you'll see up here, the main Congress front building generates a little under $4 million, police station generates 1.4, affordable housing about 1.4 as well, and market-grade housing 2.8 million for a total of nine and a half. That puts it, you know, into the realm of the hotel and the state office building. Projected tax revenues from all of those projects are 163,000, which rolled all out can support an estimated capacity of 2.3 million. We've asked for voter approval to go to 2.5. Right now, the model calls for just 75% of municipal increment. We could need to go to 100 in order to pull the deal off, depending on what the site conditions are. In addition, we think this just looks at the increment on that site. And the tax increment financing works on a district model, so other properties and projects that are coming online within the district could help generate that last little margin to get up to 2.5.
Dom, just because it's a lot of numbers, could you just do a high-level recap? Or I will just say, what we see here, the top section is for each portion of the project, what the increment is an assessment, and that generates an additional $163,000 per year in tax revenues, which can be used to make bond payments at the amount of 2.3 million dollars.
Thanks for clarification. So here it is in a nutshell, and it checks an awful lot of boxes for the city. It's a $20 million dollar project. The city's piece is 2.5 million. That would add 9.5 million to the tax base. For comparison, to date, we, the downtown core project, just looking at the parking garage itself, that whole project cost about 16 million, and directly linked to that piece, we saw about 32 million increased tax base. So in terms of that ratio and that relationship, we were more, we're further in on that project than we are on this. It also provides a very efficient cost-effective pathway to a new police station. We were looking at 40 bucks a square foot to build new. Our lease rate here comes in at 20 bucks a square foot as a base rent on a triple man lease. We will be paying property taxes for the term that we're in there, and while that normally wouldn't make sense, in this context it does, because about 60% of those taxes come back to us via the tax increment financing district, which can be used to service the bonds. It has the potential to bring CCV and Northwestern Medical Center into the heart of downtown, creates four neighborhood-scale retail spaces on Main Street, addresses housing conditions on Maiden Lane, and adds 20 market-grade housing units to the downtown. So that's where we tore through it. I can dive down into a lot more detail if folks have questions, but with that, I want to go. Chris?
Dom, the question I have is on Maiden Lane, those properties. Somewhere I thought I read that Champlain Housing was going to be involved. Is that going to be taxable housing back there or non-taxable?
It's taxable, and that, the model has that in there. So that's, that type of housing is taxed at a different rate, but it still generates some increment. So that's what you see there at that 1.4. We envision CHT being involved or another nonprofit housing developer similar, and we have used their formula in estimating the likely increment.
Is that 75%?
You know, it oftentimes sugars off to that, but it's, their formula's more complex than that. It has to do with the income, the folks that are there, and there's a whole statutory formula on it, but it's in the range of that.
I know you mentioned that this wasn't the time to ask about parking and traffic, but those are my concerns, living on a side street that's close to this. So I'm wondering, when is the time to address that, and how is that being studied and looked at?
Sure. Good question. So the development review proceeding is when that comes up. There's an awful lot of parking on-site. All of the, all of the new buildings have parking underneath, and one of the reasons we're acquiring the additional buildings that we're then going to construct the multifamily housing units on is so that we can get the land to be used for parking. Parking, it'll be much like the downtown core lots. CCV and Northwestern Medical Center will have a certain number of spaces that they will have rights to. The tenants in the residential buildings will have a certain number of spaces that they'll have rights to. They, it will also be available for public parking, because nobody owns a space, it's just the right park there. We'll manage the inflow and outflow, just like we do on the parking garage. And finally, all the overflow will be backstopped with parking in the parking garage downtown. So, you know, so CCV, for instance, might say, you know, we're going to allocate this number of spaces to staff, and this number, issue this many parking spaces to students in the parking garage. All of that's yet to be finalized and negotiated, but we're, we're well aware of the need to be sure that we can provide public parking. These tenants won't come if they're, it's going to get into parking conflicts with their neighbors on day one. So we've been looking really hard at that. And, you know, on the traffic piece, I haven't talked with the development team about a parking study, and certainly something, or, excuse me, a traffic study, that's certainly something we can look into.
I guess, my concern would be that people would be avoiding the intersection at the bottom of Congress and Main Street through the increased traffic, and then using side streets to cut through.
Get around.
Yeah. Which, I mean, they do anyway, but that that would be a bigger issue.
Yeah, I hear you. We haven't gotten there. That's a good question, and to the extent that a traffic study could help alleviate that and come up with some data and some plan about what's anticipated, we could certainly do that.
I have a few questions. One is, across the street, of course, when we did the Ace Hardware project, there was a gas station in that corner, and when they, when the city purchased the lots and tore down the buildings, they had to do some environmental cleanup and remediation, the soil was frightened and, in fact, they left it open, the pit, you know, the cellar door there, open for quite a while, a few months, a month or so, and you could smell the vapor in the gas and the soil offensively, you know. And I'm just wondering, because the guy, you know, went across the street, the Ace was there, I wonder if any of those gas fumes have, you know, seeped into that corner block, you know, or if, when you start digging up, you know, for the foundation, if you tear down those two buildings, the three buildings, start digging on that corner, what are you going to find environmentally? Do they have an idea they've done any investigation yet, or what are they thinking of? That's one of my first questions.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be disappointed if you didn't have several, but I'm just kidding. So we'll do a phase one, we'll do a phase two, and D E C will sign off on the correct action plan. There's nothing to indicate that there are substantial ground fields there, the uses, you know, the gas stations and the driving.
The parcel building before that point.
That's the burn, you know. Actually, what we're going to see, I think, is contaminants that came from the fire, not industrial uses. But we'll have an environmental engineer on the team, and we'll, we won't be able to get financing until we do phase one, fix two, D E C signs off on the plan. And that's a big part, that's a big part of the 2.5 million budget is generated ground facilities.
And then at the police station site, CCV, of course, there is that little brook there that goes by the site, is it Grace Broke? Goes down.
Stevens.
Stevens?
It's Grace.
No, I think it's Bryce.
It's Bryce.
Yeah. Close, yeah, Bryce. And there's a really long culvert that goes under Main Street at that point. I think I made it there, so we're 70 feet, 70 feet, some concrete culvert, and they've had some serious erosion issues on the downside, which they dealt with, you know, not too long ago. But I just wondering, is that a potential flooding risk? I'm just, you know, you're moving this, you know, it's, it's over to the grate on this slide, you know, it's, so it's not the grate there, but it's.
Close enough, so if you had a huge rain event, that it might jump its banks again, is that going to be looked at?
We'll look at it, yeah. Absolutely.
Dom, since this is the old site of the hood plant, and the hood plant at one time was coal-fired, are there any questions about the coal towers that were left over, or how does that work and process to future years?
We haven't gotten there, Chris. The, what just decided, the, the?
It was Hood's Creamery. It was coal-fired.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was in the corner where the citizen tank was.
Well, it's in that whole area. It's in that whole area.
There's a whole, you know, there's a pile of detergents that needs to be done on all sides. The stage that we're at now is, just like on the hotel and the parking garage and the state office building, the first step is kind of getting pre-approval from the voters, and then we turn to all of these other things. But if the voters don't support the vision, then we don't waste time in our money. So this is great to get some things on the list that we should, we have a good rounded out list.
Wasn't there a provision to purchase the lease if they had to purchase a public tenant lease by coming in?
Not allowed. We envisioned something on the back end that would, you know, that lease hasn't been negotiated yet, it's been talked about in broad terms, but we, you know, would likely have the right to buy at the back end, you know, for X percent of the price.
Dom? I just got a question.
Yeah, I had gotten a couple of questions from folks in my ward, and I thought that you might be able to clarify for them a little bit about the order of operations. So the question really is, to explain that we're not asking the voters to approve us spending 2.5 million dollars, it's that we want them to authorize the ability to do that if this deal comes together, so that it's, it's not that if this is approved and the deal falls through, that the money's already been spent. That was a misconception, I think, that had come up with a couple of folks, and I just wanted to hear the official response to the kind of the order of, when does the 2.5 million potentially actually get spent in the course of the development of the deal?
You're absolutely right. You know, this is like when you go shopping for a car, and you go to the back end and say, how much can I be approved to borrow? It's not a perfect analogy, but in this case, we're checking in with the voters, and then once that's happened, we go try to put together the rest of the deal, which is the same process we follow when we do the downtown core. We had enough conversations with the hotel, and enough conversation with the state of Vermont, to make us believe that if we had built a parking garage, we can bring a deal, put a deal together. Similarly, we're here, we've had enough conversations with Nettie Real Estate, CCV, Northwestern Medical Center, Champlain Housing Trust, and the ownership of impacted properties, that we think we can get a deal together if the voters are behind us. But in the event that the voters approve it, and we're not able to make one of those deals happen, then we'd all issue the bonds, or we issue much less, you know. If one of the projects drops out, then we don't have increment for 2.5, then it would be paired bad.
Yeah, I think it's important to put a really fine point on, the plan is not to use all that's been approved until it's actually a real deal, but you need the authorization in order to make those deals happen.
Yeah, you want to use as little as possible.
Other questions or comments?
The red building on Congress?
Yeah.
That's city-owned?
No, not. The. You know, on that building, it wasn't part of the auction we picked among. We're in conversations with the owner of that property, so we can figure out how to work together since we're going to be all around him. But at this point, it doesn't look like we're intending to buy it. It doesn't look like it's for sale. That's an evolving conversation, of course, but right now, that's not part of the portfolio.
I think we had a couple of other questions, comments. Yes?
Norman Stenhouse, I guess I have a few concerns. First of all, I believe the prior projects were brought to the voters for TIF approval as they were further along in the process. Is that the case, or no?
I don't think so. I mean, there's, there's really been two projects, right? There's the Ace project, and then there's been the downtown core project. And both, I feel like were brought to the voters really at the similar point where, you know, it's kind of the embryonic stage. You have enough of the boxes in place and the business planning done. You know, there's, it's kind of a catch-22. Do you check in with the voters early? Do you check in with the voters early, or do you check in with the voters late? And this, we feel like this is the right balance. It's the same time that we've done on other projects.
Okay, one of my other concerns is, if we have no agreements and no ink with any of these entities, how do we even develop, or how does the developer develop a lease rate to lease back this particular building to the city for a police station?
Because we have enough conversations with those folks about what they're willing to pay. And we have a multi-page pro forma that shows how it all fits together. It says, you know, if we build this many square feet at this much cost and lease it back out for this rate, then we can afford to lease, acquire this building for this and lease it back out for that. And if when we get into negotiations that something changes, then that would percolate through the spreadsheet and we would have the opportunity to accept or reject. But we're not going to start tearing down buildings and we're not going to start remediating soils and acquiring buildings until we have the signed agreements.
Okay, and the other, the other question is, I've heard you comment on $20 a square foot to rent at the new police station facility and comment on $40 a square foot to build. Could you explain that, please, a little bit deeper in depth?
Sure. So we looked at redeveloping the facility at the Fonda property for police and fire, and the construction cost came out to $40 a square foot. The lease rate that's been proposed for the police station is a triple net lease, which I'm sure you're familiar with, and the base rent is $20 a square foot. You know, it's kind of apples to oranges because, one, you own, but you don't have any of your costs to maintain it included in there. I'm using the Fonda example, but all you get is a new police facility. Here, you're not in an ownership situation, you're in a leasing situation, so it's less. But you get all of these other things as well, you know, and that's part of what you're buying.
Excuse me, and I did not catch what the square footers of the existing C C B building is.
Ten.
So what you're saying is that in order to operate that 10,000 square feet, if in fact the city were to build that on the Fonda property, it would cost $40 a square foot per year to operate versus the $20 that you believe you can sign an agreement for?
Not quite. I'm saying that when we did the planning for redeveloping Fonda for police and fire, that project ultimately resulted in a square footage construction cost of $40 a square foot. We didn't, you know, so that came first, looking at putting it at Fonda. And what came, and then we swung around to this site project because we got so much more bang for the buck in return on that investment. But it wasn't, you know, what would it cost us to build the C C B building over there? It was, it's an imperfect science. I agree.
So I might just answer something there for a second. So Dom, can you share with me the price, the total price that you're going to build the building for at the Fonda? My point is, is that I think, I think it's $240 a square foot. So to build an office building that's going to house the police department is going to be over $200 a square foot. And to build just a commercial garage with no bathroom is going to be well over $50 a square foot. But I think the total price that we got from Fonda was millions of dollars, four million?
Yeah, four and a half, four and a half.
Four and a half million dollars to build the building, so I think that's, that's the mix-up thing. The money we're talking about.
That's no question. And the only reason I, I didn't see any R S P looking for proposals for them public safety buildings on the Fonda property.
We didn't do an R S P, what we did was, we did some redevelopment planning with a team of engineers and architects to design and then estimate.
Does that include soil remediation, because there's a lot of contamination probably still there. I need the slides, I should have touched, yeah. You left your slides there, we didn't touch, you know, once you start doing.
Right, right. Any plan to redevelop Fonda would include environmental issues. Now, what it didn't include was, you know, the city still owes $300,000 or so on that site. And one of the advantages of this plan is that that site is then available for other commercial redevelopment, and that would allow us to recoup that cost, ideally with an eventual sale. That cost isn't tifable because we acquired it before we had a tif. So we can't drive the land cost to zero like we have done other projects.
Other questions or comments? I'm seeing none. Thank you, Dom.
You're welcome.
All right. Our next agenda item is liquor control board, so we'll take a motion to recess for liquor control. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back.
Good evening, so, good evening. We have 10 liquor license renewals. We have Park Street, Brakyard, Food City, Innovations, Maclet's Club, Bevils, Shooters, Sangal, the Toro, Stone Auto, and Switchyard. Looking for renewals. Everything is in place, we have the grid. The only thing that I do not have right now are the inspections, those that are, that need them, but they are in the process. As long as it's been sent out to the stadium, they're scheduled, so they're in that process. Either they're un-scheduled, they're process being scheduled, and else some of them are already taken care of, so we're super.
Okay, council, questions on the specific renewal request?
Make a motion to approve the liquor license renewals pending the completion of the application, or the renewal package to the court's office.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody oppose or abstaining? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
I think we have another 23 that are outstanding, so I'll be calling them to make sure they get them in the march.
Sounds good. Next up, we've got minutes of the previous meeting, which took place on January 31st.
Motion to approve minutes 31st.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is it? Sorry, I always get messed up on this, the 31st?
January 31st? Is that when we had the?
Is that that reason?
January 8th.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
They meant the, agenda calls for the 31st.
Okay, you want to amend your motion?
I'll amend it to the correct date.
January 8th, 2018? Second? Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose, abstaining, motion carries? Okay, other business? Any other business?
Sue, who is Burbish Fox?
That is, is one of the, on Main Street, I think they're, you know, on the middle of the place. They do coffee.
Burbish Fox, that's the, that's not the Grind?
No, it's in a separate one.
Okay.
No, the Burnish Fox, yeah, it's near, down at that end, they do antiques and tobacco.
It's remarkable.
Yeah.
Is it called the Burbish Fox or the Burnish?
Burnish.
Okay, so, okay. Take care of that. The other thing is, on the next batch that come in.
Yes.
I'd like to see Southman brochure.
Yeah.
You'd like to see them at the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I also have, for the next meeting, they came in, I just got back. They are three, I gave it to you right offhand, that had violations for online education. There was a sting, they passed the sting, but then they did find that they were not educated and not had their education, so those become the laws.
There was none of these, right?
No, no, none of those.
Okay, any other business? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn liquor control board.
Salute, motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, makes it, okay. Item number six, we are right smack dab on time. Presentation of fiscal year '17 financials, Scott McIntyre is here from Mallonson Peak. Good evening.
Good evening.
And you have a colleague with you?
I do. With me is Alina Korsak, the audit manager, who oversaw the day-to-day execution of our audit here in St. Albans. And tonight, you know, we're pleased to be here to give you a quick walkthrough. Your financial statements are roughly 100 pages, which is not our objective tonight, to walk through all of those. Alina's going to give you a quick summary of our audit, and then I will, you know, I'll try to walk through some of our recommendations. And then collectively, the two of us will try to answer any questions that the mayor council may have. So with that, Alina, if you could just give your, give a quick overview of our procedures and the results of our procedures.
Great, thank you. Audit went well, we have an unmoderate opinion here in the capra. We didn't have any management disagreements, any significant going material journal entries that we proposed. And if we can start at page 30, which is that governmental and business-type balance sheet and the co-basing statement of that position, just without them going to it, but the unrestricted for governmental is a deficit of $213,000. That really is just a result of net pension liability being on the books, if you see that liabilities.
I just interrupted you for a second. Did anyone get anything that doesn't? Okay, yeah, we had, it was the binder, the way.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I didn't break rules.
I did. What we'll try to do is, you know, there's dual perspective financial statements in here. What Alina was first talking about is what we generally refer to as the long-term perspective. Copies are going to be provided, we'll take any questions. You know, the majority of what we're going to focus on tonight is on your general fund, which when the packages come to you or the reports come to you, will really be on pages 32 and 33. And the focus will really be on the general fund and most specifically, fund balance.
Just know that we don't have anything in front of us now, so if you, you know, are reading quickly of a paragraph, we may not be taking it in that quickly.
What I want to ask, I think, is Tom went to get the copies, sorry?
We'll just wait a few minutes, ma'am.
I can hear him.
Personally, I listen better than they read anyways.
Well, as Alina was pointing out, the, you know, the most important communication that we think we make to a group like this isn't to talk so much about numbers, because they are your numbers, they come from your books and records. You know, the most important communication we make is telling you how our audit procedures went. And as she indicated, it went very well. The results of our procedures disclosed that cash and other key reconciliation issues are made on a regular and timely basis, and as a result of our work, we did not need to propose any significant journal entries. And with that, I see that members of the council are provided with a copy of the report, and Alina's going to begin on page 32 and talk about 32 and 33.
We look at general fund, unassigned fund balance is $128,000. That is about 2% of your operating expenses. Compared to the previous fiscal year, since 2016, it was a negative $188,000 that year. The next column here you see is the debt service fund tip. And it's a major fund due to the nature of it, and it was a major fund the previous year as well. And by nature, it zeros out if you look at the income signatures activity. But it's, the tax income revenue just doesn't come with that service cost. So there are transfers made annually to keep that fund at break here. We also have side book fund, that's a major fund this year. Last year, since 2016, there were two different funds there. It was the Pedal Street Bypass and Streetscape, I believe that was the other fund. Now, on the side book fund, there was a deficit there of $663,000. But that is covered by the short term note tables. There's a line of credit, if you look further up, of $590,000. That was the drawdowns at year end, plus there was subsequent drawdowns. And the maximum limit on that particular line of credit was $1,750,000. You also see other governmental funds that shows a deficit of $766,000 in unassigned. That relates to the Streetscape Fund, and that fund, the Lake Street Project, was the project in the fund that contributed to that deficit. And now, in that founder, a plan funding sources for the future that has to be a result of fiscal year '18 to basically close out that deficit. And currently, there are calculations that are going to be funded by water-based water tip. But it has to be confirmed that the sources are eligible and the sources are available, or other sources have to be used to fund the project. And if we can go back now to general fund, we look at the, your committed and unassigned, the total of those fund balances is about $1.1 million, comparing to about $2.1 million last year. Now, your fund balance policy states that about one-twelfth of operating budget has to be reserved, and, which is about $650,000. And currently, it is compliant with the fund balance policy, but we just have to make sure that that is watched really closely to make sure it is compliant in the upcoming fiscal year. The decrease is really as a result of the loan that was given to the CM, which is recognized as an expense because of the long-term nature that receivable, that receivable is offset by unavailable remedies. So it's offset on the balance sheet, and therefore, the expense drawdown to fund balance to that amount. And with that, unless there are any questions, I will turn back to Scott.
Thank you. Just to recap, again, Alina focused mostly on the general fund and that unassigned fund balance of 128, almost 129, and combined with the committed fund balance of the 988 that's committed for redevelopment purposes. As she was saying, collectively, that's about $1.1 million, which in your fund balance policy requires that that amount be about $650, but that $650 probably increases on an annual basis. So you're in compliance with the policy, you know, but should any of those committed dollars be needed for capital project fund deficit, such as the Streetscape Fund, if, as Alina pointed out, the TIF and water sewer funds were either unavailable or not eligible, and then the general fund dollars would be needed for that capital project fund deficit? And if that was the case, it very likely would put you out of compliance with your fund balance policy. Where that, the combination of those two numbers, the 988 and the 128, should any of those dollars, or a significant portion of those dollars, be needed to satisfy capital project deficits? You, there is some risk that you would fall below the existing fund balance policy that the city has. And also, you know, there is, related to that would be liquidity risk issues, should that happen. Collectively, the total fund balance in the general fund of $1,760, there's a lot of components to that, we can take any questions that may exist on that. But collectively, the fund balance, which is the difference between the assets and the liabilities, is down about $1.1 million. And just to reiterate, the primary driver of that reduction, as Alina pointed out, was the loan that was outlaid during fiscal year '17 with the hotel. On the basis of accounting that we're looking at here, technically it's called modified accrual, it's pretty close to a cash basis, not exactly, but that loan is considered the equivalent of an expenditure. of an expenditure. So it's gone from its fund balance, even though there is a repayment schedule for it.
And I just want to add in the general fund presentation here, the side book fund here is measured because of expenses and last year it was the City Hall renovation that applied that for nature.
I wanted to spend a couple of minutes going through some of our management letter recommendations and then collectively we'll try to answer any questions, you know, on the caper, the comprehensive annual financial report. We've talked mostly about the general fund and the fact that fund balance, while the unassigned fund balance is up a little bit, it still only represents about 2% of your annual expenditures and it really does need to be something to be monitored on a regular basis throughout the year, not just at year end. But in our management letter, we have a couple of follow-up recommendations from our prior year engagement and a couple of new recommendations. On page three, I would encourage you to read the opening letter and the management letter. As I look at the council, it looks as if the management letter, it's a separate document from your comprehensive annual financial report, so it could be that it is not, was not handed out earlier. I think I can speak about the issues directly, so if you're looking for the actual comments, they are not in the bound comprehensive annual financial report. There's a separate document. The first one is to enhance your fund balance policy. We talked a little bit about that in terms of the level of fund balance. We think that part of your fund balance policy is very sound and very robust. The GFOA, which is an acronym for the Government Finance Offices Association, and what you do with your comprehensive annual financial report is you present it to them and they critique it. St. Albans does it, lots of cities and towns throughout the country do. And one of the recommendations that they've come back with is to really enhance the clarity of the fund balance policy over where commitments to fund balance, in other words, a committed fund balance exists when the highest decision-making authority of the city commits dollars for a particular purpose. What the GFOA is looking for, and we concur with this recommendation, is to bring more definition within the policy itself as to who, whether it be just the voters or city council are authorized to make these financial statement commitments in accordance with the accounting standards that are out there. There's a lot to throw out there, but the GFOA is making this recommendation and we concur with it, that there can be more clarity in your fund balance policy as to who can actually make those fund balance commitments. The second issue in the middle of page three is prepare for some new single audit requirements. It's just a follow-up from the last year. Single audit is a terminology that essentially deals with as a recipient and an entity that spends federal dollars, that triggers what is known as a single audit. And there's essentially some new guidance, some relatively new guidance out there that requires its own set of policies and procedures in many cases. It's maybe not quite as onerous as that, but it's pretty close, where enhanced written policies and procedures over sub-recipient guidance, procurement guidance, and a number of issues that deal with the request for and the expenditure of federal dollars. So we are recommending that you just enhance and fully prepare for those single audit requirements to avoid any potential issues going forward. At the bottom of page three, the first of our couple of current year comments is to monitor the compliance with the fund balance policy. I think we probably pretty much spoke about this when Alina and I spoke about the general fund fund balance position, where as of the balance sheet date through our audit, June 30, 2017, collectively that committed and unassigned is about $1.1 million, which is in excess of the approximate 650 that your policy requires. But that's something that really needs to be monitored, you know, should some of those dollars be needed to satisfy capital project fund deficits, it could put you out of compliance with your policy or it could cause some sort of risk issues as well. And over on page four is to improve some internal controls over department cash receipts. Again, the city has a policy here. It's a good policy. We're looking for enhancements to it. For example, the policy requires, speaks to the issuance of a receipt. It is our experience that when the actual, whether it be a license or permits or a certificate of occupancy, when those certificates are pre-numbered and the receipts associated with them are pre-numbered, there can be more comprehensive accounting. If 10 licenses are issued and you have, you can see those 10 being issued and you can see the exact 10 receipts, it's really easy and creates a nice audit trail. So we're recommending you take your policy and not just require a receipt, but have that receipt be pre-numbered and until such time as that prenumbering between the actual license, permit, or CEO can be achieved, at a minimum, have some inspections be done by your finance department, just to be, you know, to ensure. Inspections are a great way to enhance internal control. It puts, it's not just the outside auditors that are doing inspections and test work. When management does it as well, it becomes a very, very effective internal control. That is a very quick walkthrough. I know the council and I apologize for us beginning prior to the council having everything. We talked mostly when you had the report about the general fund and those other major funds. There's a whole other handful of pages, probably starting at page 28 through 31 before we started talking about the general fund, long-term perspective financial statements. We can answer any, or certainly try to answer any questions that you may have on that perspective, the general fund or any of the other funds that this district may have.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions at this point? No, okay.
One quick one. Could somebody speak to the likelihood that we'll continue to see the transfers into the, to cover the TIF debt service in the years when we get past the initial projects? That's likely to go away, am I right?
Yeah. It's a bit of, it functions as a transfer, but what it's designed to capture is the personal property tax increment. It's always been built into the model that we were going to transfer $50,000 over every year to represent the personal property tax increment. So that's what you're seeing. We're just coming up to the amount where the TIF is projected to breakeven. It's kind of a year-to-year basis within the budget. You know, this year when we did the FY18 budget, we backed it off just a little bit, but I think it does still have some transfer in there. So it still might show for the audit that there's a transfer, but that's what we always planned to do was to transfer the personal property tax increment.
But for anybody who's nervous or confused a bit about the TIF at home, I just think it's important for people to recognize that things are going as planned and they're not...
Things are going a lot better than is planned. Actually, we're approaching breakeven a couple of years earlier than we had anticipated.
Just wanted to hear you say that.
Then we can have a TIF report in just a moment.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you very much. Tom, Courtney, thank you for your work in the audit process.
Thank you.
Okay. So Joni is not here yet. We're running a little bit ahead of schedule.
Joni will be here today.
She won't? Okay. Great, then we'll jump right into agenda item number seven, interviewing candidates for the Parks Commission. Angie's here. Good evening. We'd like to put you in the hot seat, if you don't mind.
Were we clear on how many positions were open and how many we're looking to fill?
Angie and Joni are both on it now.
Yeah, and so they're not vying for any other...
Two new ones.
Yeah.
Three new ones.
We have one, so we're seeking.
Okay. So we're down, we're down, without Angie and Joni, we're down three. Angie and Joni are just going to fill their positions and we're still looking for one.
Yep.
Is that, is that right?
Thank you for submitting your reapplication. We'll keep this, we'll keep this simple, I think. I just want to thank you for your service and would love to hear any comments or feedback you wish to share with the council.
I just consider it a huge privilege to serve on the commission. I love that there's kind of a beautiful balance within the commission members of just different perspectives, you know, original St. Albans, you know, foreign folks and newcomers and older, younger, and a lot of mutual respect and progress. That's what's inspiring me to keep going. There's just so much momentum in the city in general and so much, I think, self-awareness in the community, the parks community so much. And really in nondiscriminatory ways among all of us. I would love to see the vacant seat filled with, by somebody who has some, you know, who brings some expertise from, it could be a variety of perspectives. There was a public health nurse before that was just really valuable, just for really anchoring that, that viewpoint about, or somebody with some, we already have some technical expertise on owning public parks or designing them, but any more of that would be great. Something else I love about the commission is that it seems like everyone's willing to learn as we go and stay flexible and patient because some things don't happen quickly. I'm excited that there's a line item on the budget for parks and I'd like to see that just develop, that we get clearer and clearer and clearer about what, just the commitment level to the parks and the community.
Thank you. Really well said. Councilmembers, any questions? Take a motion?
I move that we appoint Angie Stern and Joni McGinn to the Parks Commission with terms declaring December 31, 2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your continued service.
Okay. Chip will be giving us a presentation of the fiscal year 2017 TIF district report, which goes to the state government.
Yes. Every year, we send an annual report to the Human Economic Progress Council and there's a lot in there. There's a lot of narratives, some qualitative data, some quantitative data. One of the required steps is to show the report to you before it's submitted. This report is for FY 2017, which ended in June of last year, June 30, 2017. And you can see right up front some numbers in terms of, for instance, the taxable values in the TIF district having increased over the past, geez, five years now, by $43 million in education values or $42 million in municipal values. Municipal is less because there are some increased exemptions for properties and municipal taxes that they don't enjoy dedication taxes. And in that year, we, in terms of total actual TIF tax revenue, we were able to put $777,000 in for servicing TIF debt in that year. And then later on in the report, we're able to say how the hotel opened in June, right before the end of the fiscal year. And that was a, everyone knows that was the icing on the cake, even more than the icing on the cake. It's like the top two layers of the cake for the entire, you know, TIF plan just from the start and being able to fund the parking garage, to bring 27 federal to fruition, to help mine and expand, to eventually bring the hotel downtown. So we're able to show to VFC and to the state of Vermont that TIF really works in a place like the city of St. Albans and we get accolades from their staff, you know, pretty often. So overall, pretty good report showing that the TIF is going well and we are making progress in our projects.
Great. Thank you. You don't need to take action on this, so if there are no questions, we'll continue. Thanks, Chip. Okay. Now we've got certificates of opening for Hampton Lane and Market Street to consider approval.
So every time we take an action on these two streets, we've found out that there's even more paperwork to be to file. But I think this is it, because this is going to be the thing that gets these two streets on our official highway map, which is the next item. So I'm going to hand around these forms with room for city councillors to sign and it has some backup information in terms of where these streets are attached to them, but it talks about how we opened about a tenth of a mile of what's now known as Hampton Lane around June 30th, 2017. And we opened Market Street, which had always existed but had been sort of in this weird limbo of legal status in terms of who actually owned it. But now that the city does own it and we have improved it, that it hasn't been open for general use. It was December 19th, 2017 when we did the substantial completion certificate on the Catherine and Peddles Street project, so. They're named, they're open, they're real streets, they've all grown up, so we'll have to put up a sign for Hampton Lane. If you just sign these forms, that would make it accessible.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Same.
Further discussion?
Chip, is there any actual addresses to either of these streets yet?
No, although there is an address now on Hampton Lane, we gave the parking garage a Hampton Lane address.
What number is it?
It's Hampton Lane.
What number?
26.
56.
We use E911's actual addressing guidelines, there are sticklers for that, and our ordinance doesn't quite match with theirs yet, but every time we can actually get an address in that suits their guidelines and we can tell them we're doing our best, they're very happy with it. So they said the parking garage really ought to be a Hampton Lane address, if that's going to be a street, because it's actually removed from Lake Street, it's removed from Peddles Street. So we said, okay, we'll do that. And then we said, so what number should it be based on your guidelines? And the magic number was 26. So the parking garage is 26 Hampton Lane.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All in, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.
Just for clarification, Madam Mayor, is that 26th address for the parking garage the north or south? Justice, because there are two parking garages.
Yeah, we, I think, I'll find out. We'll get back to you. We'll do a, we'll do a met information request and then find out.
So just solid right now, Chip.
But I believe it's the, oh, yeah, right. I believe it's the North Gate because that way if there were an emergency, you'd start on the lowest floor and go up until you found it. So I believe it's the North Gate.
Okay, good. If we put some sand on it, if we put on Hampton Beach.
Keep this taken.
You got the top?
All right. How about certificates of city highway mileage?
This is our annual certificate of highway mileage. The only change is that we've added the .23 miles to represent Hampton Lane and Market Street.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? Motion carries.
One really quick question. Chip, does this do anything to our town highway?
Slightly, slightly increases how much money we get.
Yeah.
Slightly.
Yeah.
Two, two, three.
Hey, every dollar counts.
That's right. Okay. We'll sign those certificates and next up, we have a power purchase agreement to consider for solar energy.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this, abstaining from the booth.
Okay.
So this is the net metering agreement that's been in place, been discussed for a couple of meetings now. 20-year power purchase agreement for a portion of the city's utility bills, allow us to get initial rate reduction and then some stabilization for the balance of the agreement. It's been reviewed by Don Gil Saunders. We've had a couple of drafts and concerns that have been incorporated wherever possible. I'd ask the council to authorize a manager's set.
So great to be making a move towards including renewable energy in our portfolio. So, great to be making a move towards including renewable energy in our portfolio. A question for you, I just totally forgot what it was. Lasted. Main benefit, renewable energy and also stability, I think you just said, predictability.
Initial rate reduction and then stability thereafter.
Great.
Wasn't there a permission to purchase it at the end? Was this the one you talked about?
Mike had requested that, and then there was also concern about buyout provisions, and so we've done the best that we can with those. We don't want to be in solar business, we just need power.
I'm sorry, I was signing while you were talking earlier. Did you, did you give an indication of how much of our electric supplies?
Yeah, I didn't, I haven't looked at it in a while, but there's still more to go, we're not at all capped out, so I think this is, you know, roughly 60%. There's still some additional opportunity, streetlights aren't in, so I'm leaning towards the utilities, but it also does benefit the general fund, so.
Great. Anything else? Take a motion?
I move that we approve the solar PPA for the portion of the electric bill.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. You've accused himself, so does that mean he is a, sure, we'll figure that out, all right. Okay, next up, proposal to digitize land and vital records using clerk's record retention funds.
I can speak about the money and you can speak about the records.
Great.
There is an existing vendor that's already underway in digitizing land records and has been doing that for over a year now. We, for a long time, we gave it to the vendor and asked for an all-in price to digitize all the land records, all the federal records, essentially everything left in the vault. That was $53,000. We then said, is there a way to parse this out and do it a little more slowly? My thinking was, can we digitize what we need to create an online service and charge? And the answer to that was yes, but that's more visits, more travel time, and that raises the cost about 10 grand. So what we're seeking approval for you is to spend the $53,000 from that record retention reserve and essentially digitize everything in the vault and be done with it forever. The reserve right now has 46 grand, about $1,200 a month gets put into it, depending on the business and the office, so we're not paying $53,000 on day one, but we'll essentially run the reserve quite well, but it will rebuild. We average $14,000 a year that we collect that has to go into that reserve and can only be used for record retention. So we'll rebuild it over time, but this is essentially a proposal to deal with it once and forever.
Thank you. Sue?
Now, there is a potential to raise, right now we put in $3 for every $10 recording fee. Legislature's going to be considering the bill, they're going to be raising the recording fees, and it'll be $50 the first page, and then it's going to be $5 for each additional page.
Fifteen the first page?
Pardon?
Fifteen?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Five zero.
Five zero.
Yeah. So with that, there's also been talk about raising the amount that can be put in to reserve funds instead of three, it may increase. They have that one before the legislature right now, I don't know where it's going to go, but.
Just so you know, it's, it's $10 per page now.
Right.
So there are $50 and then $5 per page.
And right now, right now, the property transfer is $10, that'll be going to $50.
So there's going to be an increase on that.
Occupy itself, okay, when you do a warranty deed, property transfer, and mortgage, that's $50 for the first page of the warranty deed, $50 for the property transfer, and $50 for the first page of the mortgage. So it's quite, quite an increase. The majority of the clerks were recommending $15 for 10 to 15 across. So where it's going to go, I'm not sure, but I believe part of that is going to be where there may be an increase. This is such a council also in a way to decide how much of that $10 fee right now, that $50 fee, can go towards the restoration fund.
So tonight's decision is, what, is it to get specific, what's your, what's the recommendation?
To authorize $53,000 from the fund to digitize essentially everything that has not been digitized in the vault.
Which is substantial, those land records.
Yeah, because right now, we have, right now, $6.23 a month. $2.95 is my monthly fee, two cots, and then the additional $3.28 is what we are paying right now on the loan from the first part that they've already done, because they've already scanned about 40-plus years back right now. So we ended up doing a payment plan, and that's what, so it's $6.23 right now that's coming out of that 12 to 100 month.
So how far back are we digitizing so far?
Oh, we're back to, I'd say, close to 50 years.
Fifty?
Yeah.
And our land records go back to, yeah, so that's a pretty good deal, digitizing everything else for the $53,000. We make that move, motion, I'll lead you there.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
What, what happens when we get a new land record? Is automatically digitized now?
Yes.
Somebody brings you a, a drawing of the, you know?
No, it's not, not jobs. What I'm doing is all home deeds, mortgages, discharges, several mortgages, anything dealing with it.
And it's all in digital form that I have to record?
No.
You have to enter it?
They bring it to me, I do a paper form, and then I, you know, I do it, and I send it, and then.
That means two, Sue.
And there's also, there's also a hard copy too that we keep.
That means as well, like you see.
Yeah, means, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. And next up, we've got documents to certify related to the sidewalk program.
Yes, a number of documents in front of you. The way we finance the neighborhood sidewalks project is on the short-term basis, we take out a short-term bill with our local bank. They're not interested in, in long-term borrowing, and the most inexpensive place for the city is through the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank. It's a good process for us, and then it saves us the hassle of going to Wall Street directly and engaging consultants, they serve in that role, and they have, they essentially piggyback off the state's credit rating, so they've got the best credit rating in Nashville, by far the cheapest way to borrow money long-term. We also look closely at the, the cost of short-term borrowing versus long-term borrowing. It's one of those issues where you try to look at long-term rates and where they're headed, but you also look at like your budget capacity and servicing that long-term debt. Now, if you borrow a million bucks at 1.5% for one year, the interest is, is nil. If you borrow it for 25 years, you're paying more interest, so we, the voters approve borrowing 4.95 million for the sidewalks, but we, we go slow, we borrow as needed because why pay the interest? So in front of you is to, in essence, refinance the first million of the short-term that we have to make it long-term and essentially be done with it, it's paid off. There's a number of documents related to that that are, or look like documents from the bond bank, they have their own bond council that works with our bond council and puts them together. Normally, the bond bank does one offering a year in the summer, this year they have just enough interest to go to the market, so they went this winter, which was beneficial for us, I think. To date, about 1.7 million has been found sidewalks, so we expect we'll be back in front of you in the summer with another tranche of financing, and we'll do this in a, step by step until we're at the, at the bond limit. So in front of you is, is a bond resolution, the actual bond itself, the bond certificate, and all the necessary funding documents that have to be signed by the group head of council, signed by the mayor, manager, and parts in different places. But in short, it is, the first million dollars borrowed for 25 years, and the interest will be paid back $40,000 a year of all the payments, so we're not going to make anything strain for, you know, getting a little pool of payment in year 20, it's just a simple straight interest loan.
All right, questions?
And we'll recertify the financial documents related to the neighborhood sidewalks financing.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Can you skip over the bar?
No, we, we amended the agenda at the start of the session, we will save that for a further future meeting. Consider approval of meeting minutes.
Motion approved, special meeting minutes 11:20 17.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.
Motion approved, special meeting 1:20 to 18.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Motion carries.
Motion approved, regular meeting 1:8 18.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries.
Motion approved, warrant 1:20 to 18.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, other business. We amended the agenda to allow for discussion of the union contract with abstaining. Dom, are you doing that?
At the time, we were just going to make a motion, sorry.
Okay, motion to accept the term. How should we move it? Motion to authorize mayor or city manager to?
Sure, that'd be fine. Maybe we can enter more items to the record if you'd like, but I'd bring Tom up for that.
Okay.
If you want to just put some of the highlights of the contract.
Sure.
As we represent public works employees, including water and wastewater, about a dozen folks, contract is a one-year contract with a 1.5% increase to their step schedule and a 1.5% cost of living increase. We also changed our healthcare plan, so our healthcare costs are at worst a level compared to last year and probably down a bit. Other minor changes to accrual rates for new hires, number of minor technical tweaks, but the, the long and short of it is, it's a, it's a 3% overall increase for the members, and on the healthcare side, the city's annual costs are flat if not down, which is, in a market where the rates are going up 8%, that's, that's a good achievement for the city.
Great. Okay.
Motion approved the agreement between the city of St. Olens and, American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, and having the city manager sign on behalf of the council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, let's amend that with the effective date January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. Yeah.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Okay, any other business?
Sue.
Just two?
Just two. Dog licenses ready? People can stop at any time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ah.
And then the other one, I was at a meeting this past week, and I was told that our CLA did a dramatic drop this past year, I'm going to assume related to a lot of the development. So I think we dropped from 94 to 91 or something like that.
91.2.
91.2. So I'm just, are we, what's our plan for reassessment? Have we started those planning, that planning now for, I don't know, how many years of this in the future?
So in this year's budget, we started reserving some of the funds for that.
Okay.
You have to reappraise, is it?
80%.
80%. So we got a little ways to go, but we should.
Couple more jobs like that, it'll be unhelpful, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good problem to have.
Yeah, I'm not complaining, but.
Okay, I think if we sent in the high 90s for a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, I heard it dropped like 2. something this past year. Okay, all right, thank you.
You talking about that at the health department?
No, 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 I got connections, Don, I got connections. I'm getting ready to pay my school tax.
All right. Anything else?
Yep, two. One is, I'm continuing to see trucks negotiate Lake Street and traveling south on Main Street and almost taking out cars, or having to have cars back up in the middle of traffic, and I hope we're going to do something for public safety to eliminate that, along with trucks going up Hoyt Street. Usually those are dairy trucks, and I just think that those Kingman, Hoyt, Kingman, and Lake Street, there should be no truck traffic. I'd like to take a look at no truck traffic on those streets going onto Main Street.
We're working on truck routes.
Yeah, we have two good avenues for trucks over Federal Street, Market Street, and up either Stebbins or Weldon, and we have a northern route for them to get up and out of Upper Newton Street, or Lower Newton Street. So just keep that in mind. And talking about the Lower Newton Street, I'm not sure everyone knows, some cars do, but there is no lane for traffic to go up Newton Street from Main Street, traveling north on Main Street. There's no sign there, there's no street markings there, there's no lane there for anyone to go up Main, up Upper Newton Street, traveling south on Main Street. Yet I see a lot of cars attempt that maneuver to the, to the detriment of cars trying to make the turn from Main Street traveling north down Newton Street. So there's no signage there, and I don't even know if you're allowed to do that, but I don't think anyone's ever looked at that. But if you really look at it and you're traveling south on Main Street, you come up to Newton Street, you'll see an arrow to go down, and you'll see an arrow to go straight on the, on the placards that are hanging on the wires, but you'll see nothing that shows you can take a left-hand turn up to Upper Newton Street. So I don't even know if that's allowed to happen, but at some point in time, we should take a look at that. Either it's going to be a, a narrow with a sign across, I mean, a turn with a, so you can't do it, you know, with a prohibition sign there, or else make it so that you can do it. But we have to take a look at that. Okay.
Okay, I have a truck traffic question as well. There's been a lot more truck, tractor trailer traffic on Upper Weldon. Is that, is that an intended truck route, or is this just a random occurrence? I've talked to a lot of people along the street as well. It started happening when Fairfield Street was under construction and then dropped right off once the street reopened, but in the last month or two, it's popped right back up to where there's, you know, three, four, five big tractor trailer trucks going down and up that street every day.
I don't know what's driving that. Chip, you got any ideas?
I have no idea.
It's really weird, I mean, it's not.
Do you, what kind of trucks? Milk trucks?
No, big box trucks.
Why would they want to be out there?
They're like.
They may come down our street over Upper Weldon or something.
Upper Weldon, they're coming from the interstate to Main.
We could, the, Tim gave us a good list, you know, and we could do some analysis of where we want to, but the truck route, I think, might be pretty narrow, and we don't necessarily have to get it all in one swipe, you know, but we could deal with the low-hanging fruit up the Federal Street stuff, now the intersection's done, and we got the street names out there. And then a couple of other places we might want to say no trucks.
I think they're coming down Lower Weldon, they're going across South Dome, and I think that's what they're doing, and then they go across. that's what they're doing, and then they go across North Elm, and then going down Pearl. They're just missed, they're just, that's their way to get away.
What time of the day do you see them?
I don't see too many, but I do see, they're during the day, like 1, 2 in the afternoon is when I see them.
The only thing I can foresee is maybe they're going to swipe by past the school, if there's some traffic at school, across the ground there.
I wonder if it is the early mess that is, that is coming off the Interstate Access Road and trying to get right or left. I mean, it's very difficult to get out of...
They're going down both streets?
Both, down and up.
I think they're trying to go where the light is, but that's the closest light, because we have none over by the access.
That's a terrible street for them.
I agree.
They hit trees, they hit power lines.
I wouldn't want to go down the street, I was a truck driver with a truck, it's a terrible street.
I agree.
I'd much rather leave the access.
Coming out from 104 and coming down.
Can't figure it out, and it's not, that's not always the same rock.
Okay. Any other business?
So I've got one, just to say my heartfelt thanks for all the great time we've spent together as a council and staff and with the community. It's my last regular city council meeting, I'll bet a quarter, we'll probably squeeze in another special meeting before all is said and done, but just in case that doesn't happen, this has been such a great honor to serve with all of you and to see the progress that we've made. And what I think I will always feel most proud of is that we've been able to work together, we don't always agree, we can agree to disagree, we do it in a civil manner and put the interests and needs of our community at the forefront. So thanks to all of you for this wonderful experience. And it would be remiss if I didn't recognize another outgoing elected official, our city clerk treasurer, Sue Krupp, standing ovation.
I'd like to be the same here without you two.
Any, any words to share before I must put you on the spot?
It's been quite an experience, and I'm just looking forward to the next phase of my life, retirement.
Well deserved.
My wife's ready to go gambling, but you said you wouldn't, you're tired.
All right. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, you got it. All right, you got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I don't want to go.
I don't want you to go either.